Well, good evening. Welcome to this Monday, April 18th, City Council Salem City Council Work Session on Salem's Housing Needs. We're meeting tonight with Marion County Board of Commissioners, Polk County Board of Commissioners, Salem Area Mass Transit Board, as well as the Salem Kaiser School District Board. So Courtney, would you like to do the council roll call? And then identify the other policymaker positions?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Counselor Stapleton?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Leon?
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Varney?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Thank you. And then I'd like to ask the administrators of the governing bodies that have joined us to identify their board members. To begin, I'll start with Alan Pollak, General Manager of Salem Area Mass Transit.
Thanks, Courtney. Good evening, everyone. So from the Transit District, we have Board President Ian Davidson.
Here.
Board Director Maria Inahos Pressy.
Here.
And Board Director Sarah Duncan.
Here.
Thank you. And then from Salem Kaiser School District, Kristi Perry, the Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, everyone. With us tonight is first is our Chair, Chair Avila.
I will not just say I'm here.
Vice Chair Carson Cottingham.
Yeah.
Vice or Director Karina Guzman Ortiz.
Eric, good night, evening.
Director Hyon?
Here.
Director Hinoz Pressy?
Here again.
And Director Sean Degary?
I'm here. Thanks.
Thank you. And then from Marion County, our Chief Administrative Officer, Jan Fritz.
Good afternoon, evening, everyone. Kevin Cameron, Commissioner, is on Zoom. And with me, I have Matt Lawyer. He is the Policy Analyst for Commissioner Danielle Bethel and Tanisha Bush, who is our Government Affairs Manager.
Thank you. And then I'll take the privilege of introducing Polk County Commissioner Jeremy Gordon.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I'm going to move. We approve the special meeting agenda.
Second.
Second, Hoy. And Courtney, would you call the role?
Yes, please. Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Varney?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, motion passes. I'm going to hand this off then to City Manager, Acting City Manager Kristen Rutherford, to introduce panelists and to really facilitate the meeting. So as you seek recognition, it's Kristen who will be recognizing you. Okay? Kristen?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And, you know, as we get to the Q and A part of this, we have a lot of people on this call, so I will welcome any assists. If I don't see somebody, please give me a shout out and let me know. It's a lot of hands to be watching for. So thank you very much for coming tonight. I am Kristen Rutherford, the interim City Manager. And I'm hoping that what we will have going on tonight will be a very educational and productive conversation about meeting our local housing needs. I'd like to introduce the panelists, and then I want to briefly set the framework for the discussion. Then we'll move on to panelist presentations, who will each speak for 10 to 12 minutes or so. Then I want to open up the rest of the evening to questions from our city and regional policymakers to the panelists. So we'll quickly go through the panelists. And if you just want to give a quick hello, and then we'll move on. We'll start with Mike Erdman, CEO of the Home Builders Association of Marion and Polk Counties.
Thank you.
Then Tracy Manning, Executive Director of the Housing Development Center.
Hi, thanks so much for having us.
Ian Lawland, Finance Manager with Deacon Development.
Good evening.
Richard Berger, Director of Development with Neighborly Ventures.
Thanks for having me.
And Nicole Utes, Administrator of the Salem Housing Authority.
Evening.
I want to thank all of our panelists for joining tonight. Housing, as we all know, has become an increasingly challenging issue over the last few years. I don't know how many of you saw this release from the Oregon Office of Economic Analysis, but back in February of this year, they issued a report stating that Oregon's lack of sustainable supply response in housing over the last 20 years has resulted in the state being underbuilt by 111,000 housing units. So when we want to look at what's going on in our current market and affordability issues, that is a big part of it right there. So while more housing is being produced, we have very low vacancy rates. Home sales are up. New construction is facing barriers, including financing for land acquisition, development, construction loans. We currently have rising interest rates. We have a low supply of available land and buildable lots. We have tight labor markets. We have supply chain disruption with products and materials and inflation. And all of these factors have been compounded by the pandemic. So in a market where there is strong demand, either through rising income or in migration or favorable demographics, and you have weak supply of housing, you're going to have rapidly increasing prices. And this is what's been happening here over the last few years. And when you have a market that starts to see bidding wars that drive up prices, those at lower income levels are the folks that lose out. So in Oregon, about 25% of households are spending more than 50% of their income on rent. And only about one in four eligible households are receiving federal rental assistance. About half the state's underproduction of housing, which is 54,000 units of the 111,000 units I mentioned earlier, is needed by those earning less than half the area median income, which is about 40,000 a year in the state. Solving these issues requires both a significant amount of new construction of both market rate housing and affordable housing. But ironically, some of these panelists will share with you this evening, affordable projects can be much more expensive to construct than market rate housing, which makes it all the more difficult to produce, you know, capital A affordable housing. More new market rate construction is required to meet demand. And while new construction will often serve higher income households, this reduces competition with middle income households for those same units. And this type of housing competition results often in renovations of older housing stock and gentrification and forces competition for housing even further downwards to older or less updated housing or less desired neighborhoods, until those that are at the lowest income levels are priced out of the market altogether, then feeding into our homeless crisis. The panel that we've assembled tonight will talk about these different housing dynamics. And they represent market rate developers, those with experience in affordable housing development, and also those with experience in doing mixed affordable and market rate development. So we'll start this evening with Mike Erdman as our first panelist. Mike?
Thanks, Kristen. Appreciate it. As mentioned, I'm Mike Erdman, CEO of the Home Builders Association of Marion and Polk Counties. And so I'm here, obviously, talking about from the perspective of market rate home builders. And as we see it, it is virtually impossible for market rate home builders to build new homes, really, that can be purchased by the vast majority of folks in the area. The average new home price in Salem right now is a little more than $500,000, about $504,000, I believe. And at least in Salem, there is no new construction on the market for under $440,000. So we've definitely seen prices go up quite a bit. And of course, you know, what does that mean, you know, for a median income of $70,000 for a family of four? You know, if they can save up 10% down payment, they really can only qualify for a mortgage on a $300,000 home. So there's a big, big gap in affordability on new construction. Because if a median family can only afford to buy a $300,000 home, and there's no new construction on the market for under $440, we've got a major affordability problem. And one thing I would stress is that Salem's affordability problem has really gotten a whole lot worse in recent years. And that's compared to other cities around the country, not just looking at prices. But how do we stack up when we look at home prices and income? There are 238 metro areas in the country. And 10 years ago, the Salem market, they defined the Salem market as all of Marion and Polk Counties. It was the 74th most affordable market in the country of 238. And today, we're 213th. And so we are near the bottom. And interestingly, we are less affordable when comparing income to home prices than both Seattle and Portland. So it's a major, major problem. And of course, prices are going up in large part because we're not producing enough homes. You know, in decades past, we built a lot more than what we're doing today. Last year, at least in the city of Salem, we built about 450 new homes. 15 years ago, it was about twice that. And back in the 70s, we were a couple thousand homes a year or more. And certainly, it's not because there aren't buyers out there. There are far more buyers, and there are homes for sale. When we look at inventory on the market right now, we've got just a little more than a one-month supply of homes. And that's new and existing. And that's, it's well below, we consider that balanced market of six months, where there's kind of a good supply balancing buyers and sellers. So we're definitely not building enough for what is needed. But I guess my thought is, if your concern is on, you know, affordable or attainable housing, why should you care about how much new market rate homes are being built if it's not affordable or attainable, you know, to the vast majority of folks in the area? And I don't know if you're familiar here with Seattle Sightline Institute, but it's a progressive think tank that's done a great job of really describing how building more new homes creates more affordable homes elsewhere through the filtering process. And as they describe it, you know, newly built housing allows higher income buyers to trade up. That allows slightly less higher income buyers to trade up, which allows middle-class people to trade up. And then for those in the least expensive apartments, they can trade up or perhaps even stay where they are, because there's less competition for housing up and down the housing market. And as time passes, you know, the older housing becomes less desirable compared to new homes. And that older housing evolves into the next generation's naturally occurring affordable housing. So the more new homes we build, the more new housing we provide, the faster that filtering occurs. But of course, it works in reverse if we're not producing enough new housing and we lag behind the need. You know, that filtering shuts down as we get the intensified competition pushing up rents and pushing up home prices. And those that have more than enough means vie with people of lesser means for the same homes or apartments. And that's a battle that those at the lowest incomes are always going to lose. And that really describes the environment we've been in the last few years, a lack of production resulting in intensified competitions at all levels of the housing market. And that has pushed rents and prices up. And when you think about it, really, the housing market's not a whole lot different than what we've seen in the market for cars in the last year. You know, automakers haven't been able to produce enough new cars. You know, they've got their own supply chain issues with chips and all that. And so as we've seen, prices for used cars have gone up dramatically as buyers compete for that limited supply. And I think there's a universal agreement, that's not going to change until carmakers can ramp up production, you know, to what they were doing. It's the same thing with housing. And we've got that shortage of new homes that's driven up the cost of existing homes as renters and buyers compete with each other for that limited supply. So I guess that's my stress for you. That's why you should be concerned with making sure that we're building enough new housing units than we have been building. So there's a bunch of reasons that we're not building enough new housing. And many reasons, frankly, that you as policymakers really have no control over. We've got major labor shortages. We just don't have enough subcontractors and employees to get the work done that needs to get done. As Krista mentioned, Krista mentioned, a lot of difficulty getting financing from traditional banks. Of course, many banks got burned 15 years ago during the housing recession. And so much of the financing, both for development and building nowadays, is actually private financing, much more difficult to get it from banks. We're seeing lumber and other materials increasing in price. Just last year, I think the average new home paid $36,000 more in lumber than they did the year prior. And so we're seeing the inflation that's kind of catching up with the rest of the economy. And we see regulations getting more complex and more costly. Example of that is Oregon has a new energy code that was adopted last year. That added, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 per house, just on those building code requirements on the energy side. And we're discussing, I think, in the future of a reach code that will add more than that. So, you know, one reason we're not building enough housing is the area that you can make an impact. And that's really kind of the cost of developing building lots, the amount of time it takes to get through the approval process. And I guess if I was to have you remember maybe just one thing from what I'm saying this evening, it's how the increased cost of building lots dramatically increases the eventual sales price of the home that gets built on it. And let me kind of explain where I'm going with that. It's pretty much your rule of thumb that the cost of the building lot is going to represent about 25% of the final sales price of that home. And so when our builders were buying lots for $50,000, like they were, you know, back in maybe 2009, 2010, they could build a smaller home on that lot and sell it for maybe $200,000, maybe $225,000. And we saw that happen. But when the lot cost increased to what we're seeing today, and literally, we are seeing lot prices today at $150,000 to $175,000 or more. So when a builder's buying that lot for that much money, they've got to sell that home for $600,000 to $700,000 or more. And that's exactly where the market is. That's the home prices that we're seeing for new construction. So $100,000 increase in the cost of the lot doesn't increase home prices by 100,000. It leads to increased prices by as much as 400,000. $50,000 lots, you know, we had homes that sold for $175,000 lots. We had homes that sold for $700,000 or more. You can't buy a lot for $175,000 and build a modest and relatively inexpensive-to-construct, you know, 1,300 square foot home on it, simply because it won't appraise. You've got to build a much more expensive home to justify the increased cost of that lot. And this is why, I guess, I would just encourage our policymakers to focus on trying to make sure that we've got an adequate supply of lots and that we keep the lot prices in check. And so maybe some thoughts on how we can do this. First, and this is more specific for Salem perhaps, but that's work to speed up the cities, what I would really deem unreasonably long approval process for getting development applications from beginning to end. You know, from initial application to final plat, it can take as long as two years or more to get a project approved in Salem. And in our surrounding communities, we're generally less than a year. And so, you know, development is a very risky proposition. Housing markets can turn quickly. We saw that, you know, 15 years ago. And of course, interest rates today are 5% or 5 and 1/4%. You know, six months ago, they were 3%. So the market changes when there's that kind of risk involved in a project taking as long as it takes to get through the process in Salem. Developers start to look elsewhere. And we're seeing that because development is still kind of depressed in Salem. But we're seeing our surrounding communities get more and more activity as folks look outside of town. And so, you know, find ways to do that. We're not talking about abbreviating the public input process. That's all fixed in statute. But really, what we're talking about is kind of the staff side. You know, can we find ways to get staff to work on those reviews concurrently rather than sequentially? I hear a lot from developers and our engineering consultants frustration that perhaps the initial review of projects isn't done as thoroughly as it could be. And so there's a bit of a game of fetch a rock, where you get your review back and you're told to fix some things. You fix that, bring it back, and then new things are found. And you do that, bring it back, and then new things are found. Well, gosh, if all that could be identified much better upfront, speeds that process up. So let's try and get back to get, you know, under a year, like we're seeing with some of our other cities in the area. Secondly, work with the development community to try and get homes built as soon as possible, even before final plat is done, but after the subdivision has effectively been built out. You know, the legislature recognized that's a problem. And so back in 2019, legislature adopted House Bill 2306. And so that allowed cities to issue building permits in subdivisions that were built out and deemed to be substantially complete, but before final plat had been issued. And so we've got some cities around the state, like Bend, has worked with the development community to make that work, to comply with the bill, and get building permits issued earlier. We've got other cities in the area like Salem and Dallas, frankly, that have found reasons not to allow building permits prior to plat. And so I guess we'd encouraged cities to follow the lead of jurisdictions like Bend. And let's get building permits going much earlier. I can think of a subdivision, for example, in Salem right now that has been built out and done for six months, and we're still waiting for plat. And if building permits had been issued, construction could have started a whole lot earlier. Next, think about kind of the impact of the regulatory changes you make on housing affordability and look to make changes where you can. One example, and this is something that happens in Salem and frankly elsewhere, is a big push towards connectivity within subdivisions. And certainly, we understand the desire to get people around better by walking and by bike. But these extra streets take up a lot of land and, of course, increase the maintenance responsibility of the cities later on. So perhaps we could look at multi-use paths to achieve that desired connectivity without taking up the room that streets do. And so I think that's something that could enable greater density. Look at other regulations as they're adopted to look at the other impacts on housing affordability. There has been a lot of discussion, of course, about middle housing in recent months. We're definitely seeing a lot more interest from developers, both large and small. But at the same time, I think there's a great deal of uncertainty about how much market demand there will be. What we don't know is, you know, will buyers be willing to buy or rent these units in attached while living, a duplex or a triplex? Or would they rather go out to surrounding communities and find more traditional single-family homes that they've been accustomed to? And so I think it's going to take perhaps a few folks doing those kind of projects to really demonstrate there's a market for it before others jump in in significant numbers. So we will see what happens there. I know there was some discussion and perhaps a question about will we see condominium development? I'm not sure we're going to see a whole lot in the way of condo development, at least in the near future. I think one of the big problems there is Oregon's construction defect laws. They really, really make it problematic for developers to get insurance. And so most of what we see in terms of that attached type units end up being rental units and not for-sale condos. So anyways, I think I've probably gone over the time allotted. And I know we've got other presenters, but I'll be happy to answer questions as we get deeper into the evening.
We do have a couple of questions, Mike, from Transit Board Sarah Duncan, and then followed by Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on your information from the Seattle Sightline Institute, which is very interesting, based on the assumption, it seems to be it's based upon the assumption that people will eventually trade up if there's more competition for housing. There's been a lot of talk about the tourism market purchasing up housing for Airbnb type of rentals. I mean, if you just go right now, there's over 300 rental properties in Salem that are available to rent, like a full property. Do they take into account this uptick in rental properties that are single-unit housing traditionally that are now being used for this type of rental? Just, this may not be in your purview, but thought I'd ask.
Yeah, it's not my level of expertise. What I could do is maybe in the chat feature, I will post a hyperlink to the article from Sightline. But if I recall, I think it's a few years old. And so I'm not sure. It's probably going to account for, you know, the impact of Airbnb and similar short-term housing on the housing market.
I would really appreciate a link. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Hi, Mike. I miss seeing you every other week for 18 months on the SDC Committee.
Let me just warn us.
Thanks for your service, and I appreciate what you've had to tell us here today. And you already answered many of my questions, and then Sarah had my questions. But I'm really interested in two things. One is the cost of the land. How much does that affect the cost of building? You kind of touched on that. And I do know that just recently, the city, we sold about either five parcels of 17 acres or seven parcels of 15 acres for $20 each parcel. They're out in East Salem to United Way, and they're building tiny houses. So I'm wondering if there's any way that you as home builders think there's some way, you know, we could move toward doing that with affordable housing? You know, we have land or some other governmental organization sells you the land very cheaply. In return, you agree to build affordable housing, however that's defined. And then the other thing that I wanted to ask is, you know, we have been waiving SDCs for ADUs. How's that for two acronyms that are in the housing thing that weren't in there? SDCs, folks, are system development charges. And ADUs are like granny flats, things in the backyard. And so I wonder if you could comment about the effect of the cost of SDCs? There's all sorts of things, transportation parks, water, sewer, that sort of stuff. How does that affect what you folks can build?
Yeah. So what is locked there, Counselor? So let me see if I can address your first question. That was perhaps on, are there opportunities if the city or jurisdictions were to make land available for, you know, very low cost, you know, to nonprofit or low-income fighters? And certainly, there are possibilities. I'm not sure how much of that land is available. Because, of course, on the kind of the market rate side, we typically don't encounter that. I know that we're actually working with United Way on that project you speak of. And certainly, if you can eliminate the cost of the land, that helps. But at the same time, kind of those same cost drivers I mentioned earlier, the city does not have, you know, the ability to influence labor costs, the cost of pipe and asphalt and all the rest of it are still significant. So certainly, it's still not going to be inexpensive to developments, for sure. To your point on SDCs, certainly, that helps. When you look at ADUs, I don't think we've seen a huge number of ADUs. Perhaps some of the incentives that could be looked at might be, how do we incentivize middle housing? And so one of the thoughts I have is, there is a provision that passed in the 2021 session that allowed for middle housing land divisions. And so that way, we have opportunities for folks to purchase these middle housing units that otherwise would just be owned by a landlord and rented out. So I believe, as I recall, seeing the city's schedule, I think we've got a $5,000 or $6,000 per lot fee for the creation of these land divisions. So that might be an area the city could be looking at, is how do we incentivize middle housing? And perhaps eliminating or vastly reducing the cost of dividing those lots up and turning them into middle housing for-sale type units? If that answers your question, but... Yeah, thanks.
Our chat function is disabled so that we can comply with public meeting law. But Mike, if you want to send me that information, we can get it out to everybody.
I will do that right now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next up is Tracy Manning.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. So I am the Executive Director of a group called Housing Development Center. We work statewide, including with the Salem Housing Authority. And we are a nonprofit ourselves. Our mission is to help nonprofits and housing authorities build affordable housing and facilities, again, sort of throughout the state of Oregon. And we've probably got 30 to 35 projects in some stage of feasibility to gathering funding to a development at any given time, almost exclusively rental multifamily. So I can speak mostly to the affordable housing renter market. But as Kristen shared, unfortunately, in Oregon and many other states, we have been underbuilding housing, certainly since the crisis in 2008, at all income levels. But of course, this hits low-income people and renters particularly hard because they just don't have very many options. They don't have much buying power in this market. So as Mike mentioned, you've got people who are still in the rental market that don't want to be, that are sort of at that upper income of the rental market. But then, of course, there's people with less income, the folks that Kristen was mentioning who are paying, so about 25% of people in Salem. But that same percentage holds true statewide. So about 25% of renters statewide are paying over half of their income for rent. And, you know, basic supply and... And, you know, basic supply and demand as supply has been constricted over the last few years, rents have gone up. More demand for fewer units. So as you can imagine, when people can't afford rent or are paying tremendous amounts of their income for rent, they just don't have any cushion. So really common to hear healthcare debt is a really big expense that sometimes pushes people over the edge in their housing. Car breaks down when you're, and you need to get to work, that's a huge expense. Suddenly you can't either have to pay for your car, pay for your rent, even food. Really relevant in this time right now as food expenses are going way up. So unfortunately, when renters at the very lowest incomes are strained in that way, then I mean logically homelessness also rises. People can't maintain their housing at all. So completely strains the whole system, just fewer options in affordable housing. And unfortunately, we're the predictions sort of at the federal level for Oregon, folks who watch this stuff closely, and Nicole is one of them, that incomes at the lower income levels are predicted to be lower in the end of twenty twenty-two than they were in twenty twenty-one, which means so lower household incomes, continuing strain on rents. Landlords, you know, either can't charge as much rent or they do charge as much rent and then more people sort of fall out of the system. So we work in the part of the system that tries to make housing more affordable for all of our various parts of our community. A lot of the things that we do to make housing less expensive have a lot of increased costs related to time. And of course, increased time also adds costs. And there's also a lot of requirements associated with the funding that we try to pull together to build affordable housing. So affordable housing providers have to apply for the funding sources, many of the funding sources that they use to build affordable housing. And they need to demonstrate to those funders that the project will best meet the needs the funders trying to fill. So the state's putting out funding, a locality is trying to put out funding. We go and make application to each one of those sources to show our project is going to meet the needs that your community needs us to meet. But of course, that takes time and you're stacking all of these sources together. You've got debt, but maybe that also has some kind of subsidy to it. So you're taking time, making application, trying to get these requirements to work together. So I know probably people are familiar with things that took affordable housing that folks were investing in that took longer than they wanted it to take. Those funding sources are trying to meet certain needs. They come with a lot of requirements that are outside of the owner's control. And again, adding a lot of time to the process. So our, just I took a glance at, we have four applications that my shop is working on for four different projects around the state that we're asking the state from, state has sort of a big funding round right now and we're putting in applications, asking for those funds. Those projects are looking at to have five to eight funding sources per project. Each one is an application. The funding, those funding packages are for projects that were first conceived of from one to three years and in one case even longer ago. So the process of even getting to this point has been pretty long. And those funding applications, Mike touched briefly, and I'm sure a lot of you have heard about rising construction costs, both supply chain and labor side. So we are adding costs to those funding requests, not only for current construction cost increases, but we're hearing from our multifamily general contractors all around the state that they're looking for another seven to 10% of price escalation for a project we hope will be under construction in eighteen months. So the costs are pretty challenging. And it's, it's an extraordinary moment in cost escalation right now. And we're hoping that's not something that will last, but it is something that we're writing out at the moment. So a lot of challenges in affordable housing. But also things that are really positive, that a lot of localities are really interested in figuring out what they can do to, what Salem can do, what Marion County can do, Polk County can do to increase the likelihood of building more housing. And, you know, very different part of the market, but certainly would echo what Mike said. We're moving as fast as possible. Saves costs, gets more units on the ground. There's just, there's no substitute for trying to move quickly, trying to remove barriers. There's some barriers that are going to be outside of your control, federal barriers from federal sources, that sort of thing. So where you have control of barriers to getting these units on the ground, to serve, you know, to house our community members, to, that's always going to make a difference. But the other place that it really makes a difference is honestly doing what you're doing right now. So demonstrating that housing is a priority for local leaders. And that matters in a really specific way with state funds. So state of Oregon is, and the federal government are tremendous funders of affordable housing. And a lot of the federal funds that get put out, some are controlled locally, but quite a few are also controlled at the state. So state money is a huge part of either state money or state allocation of federal tax credits is a huge financial source for getting more affordable housing on the ground locally. And one of the things when we're applying for those funds that we get points for, and therefore our local application is more likely to be selected is if we have state and local support and specifically financial support in our application. So, you know, they want to know that where that the city, the county is investing in and sees the value in the project that you're proposing. So I don't think there's any expectation that a locality is going to be able to entirely fund a housing project. But it really makes a difference to demonstrate, you know, what you're doing now, coming together and getting those points for that application. And the revenue does make a difference. Again, Mike mentioned SDC systems development charges. It's a substantial chunk of change in an affordable housing project. It reduced land is also an expense, fee referenced donating or essentially, you know, substantially reducing the cost of these lots for tiny homes to be built. Any places you can reduce the expense side of a project, SDCs, taxes, land, that's going to decrease not only the cost, but also the time it takes. And again, the time to assemble all of that funding so we can get the project on the ground so it doesn't cost more. You can imagine carrying those projects for years and years, even if you're a nonprofit, costs more. And the housing doesn't get built. And the other thing that's important about that local funding source, or sometimes you'll get a foundation, we call a gap funding source, is it contributes to the quality of the project that's built so that it really makes a difference in how an affordable housing project fits into the local community and makes that building those families part of the local community. You know, they can afford to put in the playground that all the local kids come and play at and really makes that difference. And then I would say the other thing that we're a place where local leadership in affordable housing can really provide very real assistance is supporting the projects themselves and using that leadership space to convene local conversations, to show support for housing that is coming into a community that has been, you know, that is affordable housing. But that's housing that's going to serve families, that's going to serve seniors. There's a whole bunch of other things out there in publication about as baby boomers are older, the senior population is growing, that's a part of the low-income population, unfortunately, that we really need to focus on housing. And when local leaders come into a community and say, it's important to us, to my neighbors, to the people who, you know, helped to put me in office that I'm here to serve, that we provide this affordable housing and convene those conversations out in those neighborhoods and bring in the people that are going to be served by the housing. You know, you have constituents that you know that will be served. And I think sharing that with people is a piece of leadership that I've seen be really effective. One of my favorite stories from really early in my affordable housing days is I worked for a group that was providing housing for people living with HIV and AIDS, sort of in the late nineties. And there, that just so happened that the location was at the confluence of two neighborhood associations and a business association who had concerns about this low-income housing that was coming into their neighborhood. And so the local leaders who had had a lot more, you know, to be fair, knew a lot more about the project and had been working on the project for a long time, brought those communities together. It was a big, well-attended meeting. I think there was a couple of meetings. But brought in the folks who were going to be living there. And so they could have a sort of face-to-face real conversation. And it wasn't a conversation about some other people, right? It was a conversation with the people in the room who were going to be living there convened by that local leadership and was really was really effective. So I guess I want to pause just to applaud that this many of you came together to sort of start figuring this out because I know it's a lot. And it's, and it's important.
Thanks, Tracy. We do have a couple of questions. I think firsthand up was school board member Carson Cottingham and then board member Chandler Gary.
Thank you so much, Kristen. Tracy, thank you. That was really awesome presentation, discussion. I'm just curious, something we've been talking about quite a bit as a school board is around the idea of having affordable units within market rate housing. And so I'm wondering, you know, I know there's a lot of examples nationwide, ranging from small, medium to large cities who are wrestling with a lot of the same things I think we are. You know, we want, you know, our, you know, we want to have urban renewal and in our urban renewal districts, we want to attract developers. But we also have the competing, I think, policy interests of making sure that our teachers and bus drivers and seniors, as you mentioned, are not priced out of those buildings almost immediately. And so what are your thoughts on more like mixed income or multi-income and more integrated solutions to affordable housing? So that we don't end up with sort of low-income project over here, middle income over here, affordable and that, that we can think through that together?
Yeah, there's, as you said, there's a lot of examples of mixed income housing. It's, it is a less common product that gets built. And my perception is in part, it's expertise. You know, people who primarily build unregulated sort of market rate housing, they can build a little bit more quickly with a lot less funding sources than we do. And there's not a lot of incentive for them to add affordable units, not because they're bad people, but just because it substantially increases the degree of difficulty for them to build their housing. And so there's, it's, unless there is an external incentive for them to do so, you know, they might rather build the market rate housing and then help somebody else build affordable housing, but not slow down their project. Likewise, a lot of affordable housing developers, the funding sources that we use to do that don't generally allow, some do, but a lot of them are more on the lower end. And so for us as affordable housing developers to figure out how to build a little bit higher income where there aren't a lot of sources available for it is kind of outside of our area of expertise too. And so this mixed in some ways can even be more complicated. You don't see anywhere near as much of it being built. I would say if it's something that is deeply important, then you incent it from the outside. You say we've got money or tax breaks or some land available and here's what we need to see in order to do that. I would certainly recommend that you sort of test those theories with folks and make sure you're going to get the product you're looking for. Because it does. Yeah, it's a hard product. It's very, it's a smart thing for you to be thinking about and talking to people about.
Thank you. And next is Board Member Chandler Gary and then Counselor Nordike.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate this opportunity. I'm an immigrant from India. It's a very crowded nation. I mean, we all know that. They lived in cities with the huge population. Now, one of the things I see in Salem is we are a very segregated city. You're segregated around poverty, people of color and various other social adversities. And you know, I see that there are some challenges as an immigrant. When you come here, we don't have enough money, but we do contribute towards economy. We don't have money for even buying a car to start with because we haven't built a credit rating yet, right? So in a lot of ways, this is causing more and more segregation. And some of our policies kind of bind our children to the neighborhood schools. So that adds to that. But we all know an integrated community is the best for our nation and for our future. So the question I really want to say is when I was trying to go through the gold ten of the housing, whatever the state's thing, which really talks about the housing needs analysis. And I heard in the beginning that there is a huge gap between what we need versus what we have. So the question is, it does allow us to think of policy changes around rezoning or building different types of homes or urban growth boundary expansion to meet that housing production survey. I mean, you know, to match that gap, close the gap. So in places like Bangalore or Singapore or in other countries, we kind of go up using the same land or we have to think of different ways. But having a mixed unit further away from the transportation or nearby grocery store or things also will be hardship. So are there some ways in which we all can think of our policy changes, which will be like alignment of policy, whether it's transportation, helping the kids transport them to school or nearby grocery in that's what they call housing sectors? So that there's a mixed use with everything is almost like self-contained, you can walk, those who don't have a car. Are there any policies that overlap and we can think of working together? Expand the urban growth, go up, but make sure that each locality has everything that is self-contained. And then we can share the resources of transportation, schools, et cetera, can move people back and forth. So, so that we can have more integrated community. As long as we are not going to be integrated, we are close to ninety-seven different languages spoken. So it is really a very diverse but segregated community. So any thoughts on that, ma'am?
Oh, yeah, meetings like this, I'm sure help. You know, I, the thing I would share that would, yeah, obviously you've got all the other experts in the room specific to affordable housing in your community, this community. The state actually asks that question. So when we apply to state funds, there are quite a few points that we, points, this is how we get scored, that speak exactly to what you're speaking to. So we get points if the location is within, you know, a quarter mile of a major transit, within like a half a mile or to a mile of a, of a school, of a grocery store, of a park. And so that's baked into the And so that's baked into the state funding system. And so as you're thinking about how to coordinate locally, if you, you know, perhaps used those, you don't have to use the exact measurements, but use something like that as a model that's both, you know, relatively simple. I mean, I'm sure it doesn't get to the depths and the community building mirrors what another locality is doing. It, you know, anytime we, one of the things that complicates the work that we do is a lot of different funders having slightly different regulations because that's, it's, it's, you probably have that in your own work. It's a little crazy making and it slows things down. But there's this model that speaks to exactly what you're saying. And so if you started with that model and then, you know, said, okay, here are the locations in our city that would meet this criteria, what can we do, you know, which of these then also meet what Salem needs, what Polk County needs, what Marion County needs? And is there something we can do specific to those locations that that would incent affordable housing to happen there?
Thank you. Councillor Nordeik, then councillor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Kristin. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I welcome to our city council meeting. I'm delighted that we have this opportunity to gather and I'm sure there are other topics that we could readily have work sessions on. So I welcome this opportunity. And if any of you would ever like to meet me for coffee to tell me what's going on with you and your organization, I'm all ears. So you can reach out to me after our meeting tonight. One of the things that I was reading about recently was, I believe it was an op-ed in the Oregonian. And it was really trying to talk about creative ways of making housing even more affordable. For example, does every single unit need its own independent bathroom? What are other ways that we can make housing even more affordable at different levels of affordability? And so I throw that question out to any of our presenters tonight who know this subject far better than I do. But my main message is what are we doing to be creative to drive down the cost of housing and make it as bare bones as necessary for the populations that would be happy to share a bathroom? Would be happy to not have to pay for a parking space? Who would be happy to have something as simple and as modest as possible, given their income sources? Thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And so units without bathrooms are definitely a single-room occupancy units are, were built at the turn of the century a lot. And then not so much for a long time, with the exception of college dorms. And, you know, most people and are starting to be built again or rehabbed, taking, you're seeing, one of the things that you're seeing now is buying hotels or motels and converting those, you know, a lot, those kinds of units if they're enclosed. Some of those single-room occupancy units didn't have bathrooms. You know, one thing I would share is if you can do that quickly and inexpensively, that's, you know, fantastic. It's probably not something that any, that should be anyone's forever home. You know, I come from an organization that did a ton of that kind of housing, but you know, most of us don't particularly want to share a bathroom forever. But, but yeah, I mean, I think that that way of thinking of all of the solutions, right? People mentioned ADUs, people mentioned middle housing, single-room occupancy units, you know, units that don't necessarily have a bathroom. I think that are, you know, there isn't a magic bullet that I'm aware of, but allow finding the places that allow choice and allow flexibility where you can. You know, Nicole has to deal with HUD a lot and HUD does not allow her any flexibility. So places where the city can, can help with that make all the difference in the world. So the fact that you're thinking about that place where you can be, where you can be flexible is, is really going to be helpful to her and to other developers to build.
I see that Nicole turned her camera on and my guess is because we have that model with shared bathrooms at Redwood Crossing. I'm going to guess you turned your camera on because you'd like to speak to that for a moment.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Yuz. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. And thank you, Tracy and councillor Nordeik for bringing this topic up. The Salem Housing Authority is always working with Housing Development Center and our partners to try to find a creative solution that can be well thought out and planned for our next development to meet the needs of the community. I can tell you that the single-room occupancy is a very difficult design for us to manage, maintain and be able to get enough subsidy income for us to keep long-term sustainability. It is, it is one of those options. Redwood Crossings is a great example. That is 37 units of our permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless. And that one has proven very difficult to manage with the single bathroom for two units as well as all of the HUD criteria and regulations surrounding waiting lists, gender, gender identity, different things for us to meet the expectations for all the different regulatory agreements that are on that property, as well as when we open the doors to that building, we open the doors during a major pandemic, wildfire and various other things going on, which then created us an extensive amount of additional cleaning and requirements to keep being able to use both sides of, of those homes for people in effort to keep the bathrooms clean, who maintains it, who's managing it in that space? We've had to have legal opinions made on who, who, whose space is that? Is that a community space? Is that a lease space? Various different things that go around surrounding the single-room occupancy and it, it has been determined by us that we actually are in a better position to go ahead and do the one bedroom or even micro units where every individual does have their own bathrooms or, or smaller versions of it to meet the needs in the future. Just because of all of the dynamics that surround that single-room occupancy and the added administrative burdens related to managing and maintaining it. So that's just one, but that's one creative solution. You know, Redwood Crossings was our pilot project. We took a building, we rehabbed it, we gave it our best and, and trying to maximize 19 units into 37 units and provide additional housing. We still do a great job at it. It's a great building. It's serving our purpose. I can just tell you, it is a very costly project to maintain for the minimal amount of units that we have. And then 37 SRO units or single-room occupancies is really about a $400 a month subsidy into our agency to, to be able to manage all of that and do all the permanent supportive services and everything that goes on at that site.
Councillor Gonzalez.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Nicole, for that. Tracy, thank you for the information and for sharing the complexity of low-income subsidized housing. But going back to talking about the different layers of funding and with your experience in the industry, long-term, what are, what do those sources of revenue look like? Is it going to get more competitive? And the reason I ask is, most people will say that affordable housing is one of the major issues in town. And when they say affordable housing, I think most people would just assume what they can afford. And government, we define it differently, you know, it's defined differently. But in this case, is it gonna, are those sources of revenues, where do you think they're going? Are they going to hinder our ability? You know, to produce X amount of units going forward? Because I want to share the truth to the people. I mean, for example, Sequoia, I think it was about, like you said, 40 units, it was about four years took to develop. So 40 units, four years, you know? And I just want our community to sort of really know what we're up against with regard to developing affordable housing.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the funding sources are difficult and they aren't getting worse for the most part. And they are, they're more competitive because there's more people that are willing to develop affordable housing. Oregon has put a tremendous amount of additional resource into developing affordable housing. And that abundance has attracted people, people from outside of Oregon, people who are still learning about affordable housing to be willing to try to build affordable housing. And so the competition doesn't make it worse, doesn't make it harder. It's, but it doesn't make it better either. So, you know, I think that it's, it's really hard to tell somebody like building affordable housing is really hard and there's not a lot of way, I don't know a lot of ways that you could tell a constituent tomorrow how to make it easier. You know, I think one of the things that, like I said earlier, that, that localities can really control is showing that support for affordable housing. You can't, you know, it's very difficult to do something about a HUD regulation around these things, you know, subsidy layering reviews. You know, what you can control locally though is, you know, supporting a housing project so that neighbors understand it when it's coming into their community. And so it's not going to get hung up on a really long public review process on top of a really long funding process. You know, supporting the folks, not the world's most popular thing, but supporting the folks within government that are reviewing these permit applications that are, you know, getting this appraisal work done or whatever it is that needs to get through, you know, those regulations are there for a meat, for a reason, so that folks can have and live in the community that they want to live in. But the things that you can do locally are the places that slow it down locally. So showing that support and that affordable housing isn't for some sort of scary person down the street, you know, it's lots of grandmas and lots and lots and lots of working folks and, you know, people that are new to our country and people that are forming their own households or people that have had health concerns. And so there's a lot of slowness that we can control.
School board member Chandler Gary.
So, thank you very much. You know, in the short term, because it sounds like we have like two different pockets, one very expensive and one a very dense community living. In the short term, are there any ways to improve connectivity with neighboring towns like State and all the surrounding towns? Where people can live and come to work here because eventually it'll improve our economy. It'll also lead to competition in between the cities so that the policies, they can take a look at the policy and saying, is my city causing an, and you know, too much a burden on builders and taking two, three years, whereas a neighboring city may say, you know, in six months, we'll get the approval done. So that competition between different cities will lead to kind of cleaning up. If there, we are having some kind of misaligned policies or, you know, for that, we need to have good connectivity with different towns where I can probably stay in state and come to work here. Or a teacher can rent, buy a home or a starting home. And so that can hopefully, I'm just thinking in my head because San Francisco is a good example. Nobody can afford it. But if that bart wasn't there, we wouldn't have had teachers, you wouldn't have had anybody work, even doctors can't afford. So they had to probably live in somewhere else, you know, say, and take it part, come to work. Are we going to price ourselves out to oblivion because most folks cannot live here, nor we have good connectivity with nearby towns that eventually it will start hurting our economy? If you don't take a look or create creative competition between cities to bring down the policy burden? Any thoughts on that?
Personally, I'll pass that to all the people with all the councillors in the room. Sounds, I, yeah, I just, I'm a housing, I'm a housing geek. So connectivity about among cities isn't my area of expertise, but I love and appreciate your vision. And I'm sure there's other folks here who are much more appropriate to speak to that.
Do we have any councillors that want to speak to that? I think this is a difficult one to speak to because the way our structure of land use and transportation planning works, it's more at the local level and in, in most parts of the state, not at a regional level. If you're in the Portland metro area, it's looked at at a regional level. But, but that's not really how it works in most other parts of the state.
Well, the good news is we can change that, isn't it? We can think in terms of changing that. After all, we make the policy, we can change it. So that would be one way to start thinking of building competition so that we simplify.
I see that Commissioner Gordon has raised his hand. And do you want to speak to that from the Polk County perspective?
Sure, just briefly. I had a conversation with Commissioner Bethel recently and I guess Marion County is contracting to conduct a regional housing needs analysis. In Polk County, the, the state threshold for population, I think it's 10,000 and then a city is required to conduct that. But it is kind of piecemeal. So I'm exploring ways that I, we can maybe approach that in Polk County. And the story will not be told fully unless we integrate that a bit with Marion County. So that's part of why I'm here to see if there is some opportunity for that and how we can sort of enter into that conversation. I can tell you anecdotally that a lot of folks in Polk County work in, in Salem for the state or the county and also work in Corvallis. And that's kind of a pain point in, in Polk County. But we are serving a housing need for the region. I just, I'm not sure exactly how that looks. So more, more has to be done to study that.
Thank you. Yeah, I think probably the, a very quick way to describe it is that the communities around us provide a safety valve in terms of housing costs and a, a part of it, as Mike Erdman mentioned, is cost of land, although cost of land everywhere is rising. The impact of state law and state planning regulations, which are somewhat different, but also fairly uniform among the communities. And what, what the communities around us are experiencing as I talk to representatives of those communities is the same kind, the same kind of dynamic we're facing. Ours may be a little, a little harsher at the top end, but we do, we, I think we do all share in a concern. And then I think the ultimate concern is that what we're providing in the outline communities is less expensive housing. And that's, that's really relative when you say that. But we provide the employment base, which has, I think, as Jeremy mentioned, some, some kind of unintended consequences out in other parts of the, of our metropolitan area that would like to see more economic and localized development, commercial and industrial development in their areas. And we tend to eat up some of that. So I think it's, it's going on, the interaction. And whether we like it or not at time.
We have another question before we move on to transit board member Davidson's question. Just some timekeeping here. We have about 45 minutes left and three more panelists. I intentionally put Housing Administrator Yutz as our last panelist in case we need to forfeit our, our own time here. But we'll move on to the next question. And then if there are no more questions after, after board member Davidson's, we'll move on to our next panelist. Board member Davidson.
Thank you. I don't have a question. I just wanted to add a, I guess, some complexity to the conversation to mention that interplay with transportation and housing, as has been mentioned earlier this evening, I think is really important as we consider outline communities. Right now, inner-city transit. Right now, inner city transit funding in Oregon is abysmal. It has been for generations and that will take regional action or statewide action to improve that because Chariots is statutorily limited by the kind of funding that we can utilize. And so I wanted to just interject that into the conversation, something to consider as we consider our regional housing needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panelist is Ian Llewellyn with Deacon Development. Ian?
Yeah, thank you, Kristen. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I'll be pretty quick. Tracy and Mike actually touched on some of the stuff I was going to mention this evening. Really appreciate the opportunity. It's been incredibly informative. My name's Ian Llewellyn. I'm the Finance Manager for Deacon Development. Our company builds and develops real estate in the Pacific Northwest. We specialize mainly in mixed-use retail properties and then also develop market rate multifamily projects. And we also have a construction group up and down the West Coast. Our development group is currently working on multiple projects in Portland, as well as Sherwood, Corvallis, Salem and Battleground, Washington. So my hope for tonight is to just offer a few brief insights into our real estate development process. And then just touch on a couple of the challenges, challenges that we're currently facing. As a developer and a builder in today's world, the biggest challenge we currently face with our projects are the increasing construction costs. Commercial construction costs in Oregon increased about 21% in 2021. Building material costs are projected to have similar increases this year as well. Consumer price inflation and cost push inflation is running high and looks to kind of keep running high here for the foreseeable future. So all of this means increases in labor wages. Mike mentioned subcontractor employees and finding the trades is tough. That continues to be prevalent in our commercial world as well. So we're forecasting some pretty good increasing construction costs in the coming years. Just as one kind of real world example, we have a 157 unit proposed apartment project for downtown Salem. And just in the last four months, the construction budget has increased 5%. So it's a real challenge with increasing construction costs for market rate projects, rental rates need to go up commensurately to make those projects still be viable for developers and allow them to, to get their construction loans that they need. So it's a very tough spot, you know, how, being able to balance rising rental rates needed to justify new market rate development, but kill, still keep housing affordable in Salem is going to be a challenge. I think one important thing in our discussion about market rate apartments is to understand the dynamics of delivering housing into Salem is that it costs materially the same amount of money to develop a large apartment building in Portland as it does to develop one in Salem. And while the costs to build the building are the same in both communities, the apartment rents on average are about 20 to 25% lower in Salem. So this creates a big financing gap and it's a challenge and lenders and equity investors see that gap and ultimately look at the communities a little differently and evaluate the projects appropriately in that manner. So just a question that you might ask yourself is if you're looking at four or five projects to do and you can only do two or three of those projects, do you, do you look into the Portland market where it costs the same to build that building, but the rents are 20 to 25% higher? So it's, it's, it's still difficult for us to get projects to pencil in Portland right now. And so that, that gap in the rental rates kind of exacerbates that challenge for the Salem market as well. So that's kind of the biggest challenge for us. Kind of, you know, asking how do we bridge that gap and how does a community entice developers to bring their teams and their projects into that community? We really believe that this is where the local incentives come into play that Salem offers. The math for us as a market rate apartment developer in Salem just simply doesn't pencil for us without those incentives, integrated incentives. Just to kind of give you a real life example for our apartment project that's proposed for downtown Salem. If we were able to secure the 10-year multi-tax abatement, it would increase our loan amount by $3 million. And so that's a $30 million project. And instead of a $23 million loan, it turns into a $20 million loan. So the, these incentives create real differences in the capital structure of the projects, particularly are helpful and as interest rates are rising, causing loan amounts to go down as they are. So it's important to understand that the incentives that the city offers, like the MUTIP program, are not just about annual savings and property taxes to make up for lower rents. They really change the entire global capital structure of the project, either making them feasible or not feasible. So I think that's an important point to understand. So as a developer, kind of looking in Salem, you have a menu of investment options in front of you. You know, if you want to put your time and energy and money into the Salem community, into the Portland community or into the Vancouver community. And the construction costs are materially the same in each city as I mentioned. So you have to kind of evaluate what incentives to different locales offer to developers to, to kind of make that decision. So I wanted to highlight that. I think that's an important part of it. I also wanted to briefly mention, and then we'll allow, allow back to the conversation, just the idea of kind of doing a hybrid market rate slash affordable apartment project is very hard for us to do, as Tracy kind of alluded to. They do do them, but it complicates things. It complicates the financing. Specifically, oftentimes affordable projects have tax rebates or tax subsidies that make them economic and sometimes have up to 20 funding sources at times, whereas a market rate project typically will just have the, you know, the loan and then the equity. And so it, it really complicates that approach for us. So it's very well intentioned, but it does, it's possible to kind of have adverse effects on our ability to do those projects. We think that a market rate and affordable can coexist together in the Salem market. And we think that they're both really needed to fill that gap right now. So kind of just to summarize, the construction costs of new projects continue to climb. We expect them to trend higher. It costs materially the same to build an apartment building in Salem as it does in Portland, but rents are 20, 25% lower in Salem on average. Something has to fill that gap to make projects in Salem economic and attract developers and their capital. And we believe that cultivating a friendly and incentivized environment with things like the MUTIP tax abatement for, for developers help fill this gap. And community incentives aim at all kinds of housing is the best way to attract developers and their capital to Salem. So I'll cut it short there. Really appreciate the opportunity and your time this evening.
I don't see any hands raised. Oh, now I see a hand raised. Board Member Navarro.
Thank you. Yeah. So the question that I had is, could tax abatements or waiving of the SDCs to support specialty housing projects for individuals experiencing certain barriers be a solution to affordable housing? And I'm talking about like senior parks, veteran villages, halfway houses, et cetera. And would developers be interested in these types of projects with the mentioned incentives?
Oh, yeah, I think absolute, I think absolutely all those incentives certainly help the process. And we've actually looked at doing affordable apartment projects and partnering up with other people. So we've looked at them. We continue to look at them. The challenge for us is when you try to kind of blend the two together, it creates, it's just, it's just hard for us, as Tracy kind of alluded to, to some degree. But yeah, I think all those incentives really help. Portland offers SDC breaks for affordable units. So it's something I've seen in other locales as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I'd like to add that locally, we do offer SDC breaks for affordable projects. Any other questions? All right, our next panelist is Richard Berger.
Hello, everyone. Mike and Tracy and Ian covered a lot of things that I was planning on covering, so I'll try and be short, but I do want to talk a little bit about who I am and what we develop and then hit a few points, just add a little color to what they said. I work for a company called Neighborly Ventures. We are a Salem-based development company that specializes in multifamily housing. Although we're based in Salem, we actually do develop projects across Oregon, Washington, Idaho and Utah. And some of you guys may know that we were formerly a part of Mountain West Investment Corporation, but we split off a few years ago, so Mountain West can focus on philanthropic while we continue developing real estate. Since around 2015, we've developed around 1,300 units of multifamily apartments in the Salem area. And of those, about 500 units were affordable housing on some level of the spectrum. I've found just personally in trying to make affordable housing work, it takes about twice as much work and you make as about a quarter of the profit as a market rate project. A few of the points that kind of were already mentioned that I want to hit on or touch on, one is leadership. Tracy mentioned that it's really critical to develop affordable housing, that leadership at a policy level happen. And I really want to say thank you to the city specifically and policymakers in general. In 2017, the council added affordable housing and housing in general as one of your number one goals. And if that wouldn't have happened, we wouldn't have developed all the affordable housing in Salem. What that did was it really helped align the council together in trying to get affordable housing to happen and give direction to staff to work on that problem. And I know you guys are, are getting this group together and that's fantastic, but really this is a lot a year process. And although we have a huge crisis today, the crisis would have been worse if the council wouldn't have really started addressing this back in 2016, back in 2017. So I think that's really important to emphasize. And another item Tracy mentioned is how hard affordable housing is. I mentioned kind of how hard it is anecdotally. But really affordable housing takes unique funding and they have, funding has a lot of strings to it. And you try and overlay that with the already complicated approval process that is real estate development and it just gets very unmanageable. We've, we've tried all kinds of funding sources to try and make projects work. We've used federal LIHTC, federal home, state lift funding, urban renewal funding. And, and city funding and local funding has strings attached. State funding has worse strings and the federal strings are just terrible. And I mentioned that because any way you guys at the local level can supportable, support housing and support affordable housing is just simpler. We will not do another LIHTC project in Salem. I hope others will. I know others are looking at it and they have done it and it's, and it's great to bring in federal money, but it really makes the, the process just so cumbersome. And trying to mirror that program with other funding sources and try and match up timing is just, is just very hard. I, I frequently tell my friends that I, my beard is graying because of cornerstone, which was a LIHTC project in Salem. And if I do another project, I'll have as much gray hair as, as Mayor Bennett probably. So I'm going to avoid that. Another thing that was mentioned was mixed income. And we're actually doing a mixed income project in central Salem called the Jewelry Project. That was made possible through some local funding and City of Salem funding. So it really allowed us the flexibility to do a mixed income project where federal fundings just, just wouldn't have allowed us to do it. Another thing that's been mentioned by, by most of the people today is housing costs. I thought about not mentioning it just because it's kind of been, you know, beating a dead horse, but I, I just want to give you my numbers. We've done a lot of projects all over and just, just kind of as a data point, we had a project two years ago that we started that was just the construction cost was $115 a square foot. Then we had some projects last year that jumped to $162 a square foot. And then I just bid a project this year and it was $245 a square foot. Okay. In the old days, like, you know, four years ago, I would say, I would, if I was being conservative, I'd say 9% growth year over year. And if I was being aggressive, I'd say 3%. Okay, this doubles the price in two years, more than doubles the price. Now, these are in different jurisdictions, so they aren't all perfectly apples to apples. But if you had a $10 million project in 2019 and today it's up over $20 million, it's really hard to make that work. So I just want to kind of give you a little color with how extreme those are and, and maybe real numbers as opposed to hearing 20% or 5% might give you an indication of just, just how hard that problem is. Another thing that got, didn't get mentioned, I don't think enough, was specifically with regard to affordable housing, operating costs are very hard to deal with. It, it's one thing to fund the project, but when month to month, your rent is lower than your expenses, you, you got to fill that gap. And so I've been involved in projects where we've thought, well, we can get this funded. And then we thought, well, how do we fund it over time? Who's going to pay for that? And there's just fixed costs that I, I would love help and things like tax abatement, things like utility discounts, anything that can be done to lower that cost of operations can really make a huge difference where I feel like a lot of kind of public entities are thinking, well, we need to pay for affordable housing. How can we pay for it? And that's a big piece. And that, you know, if you pay enough and you fund maintenance reserve funds, maybe you can do it, but that operating side is also a big problem. You can't just have lower rents. Because those rents have to fund maintenance and have to fund utilities and have to fund taxes and have to fund staff to manage, manage leasing and manage all those things. One other thing that was mentioned is timing. I, I just want you to know, timing is a big thing that you guys get hit on all the time. I think because you guys have a huge effect on that. And a lot of people say, well, if you could just make it, the process go faster, that would help everything. I want to tell you, it would. It would help a whole lot. But I realize there are people and they have jobs and they have things and, and there's a reason we have the regulations we have. But a typical project takes, that I build takes minimum of three years and usually three to five years. On the jewelry project in Salem took about six, and when it's all done, probably seven or eight years. Right? Because there we were dealing with the state and the city. And so that, that got really complicated and a lot of neighbors who really want, were interested. So anything you can do to speed that up is really powerful. And I want to give you one example you guys may not know about. On the cornerstone project, there was a, a lot of help from the city financially, as well as just, it was in an urban renewal district and, and there was a street that had to be built. So there was a lot of collaboration between the city and our development staff to try and make that work. It was the first project to use lift funds in the entire state. So it was creating a lot of new things. But right near the end, we had a problem with our survey. And it came down to the city surveyor said our survey wasn't right and our surveyor said it was right. Okay. And it's the kind of problem that I don't know how to solve. Like, I'm not going to argue with either surveyor, that's their job. And if the city wouldn't have stayed at the table with us and talked this through, this could have delayed the project for years. And if this were just a typical market rate project, it would have. And it was no one's fault. And it was no one's fault. In the end, we had a mistake on our survey that it took several times to find. And with the help of the city, we were able to find it, and we were able to get the project going. But I can only imagine if we didn't have the city leadership and the city's support and staff's willingness to look it over and sit in the room with us. And we actually had meetings weekly to try and figure out this problem when it was just the surveyors just needed to deal with a technical problem. But those kind of things can just kill a project. And I feel so bad for developers who run across these and just don't know what to do. And if the city staff and leadership wants to consider them an adversary and not work with them, those types of final plats where you put millions of dollars in, you're just waiting at the finish line, can just be delayed for years. So those are the things that, oh, one other thing on timing, it rains in Salem. So you can't start construction. You have all the timing things of financing and market, and then on top of that, you have rain. And so if sometimes a month delay, the difference between starting September fifteenth and October fifteenth can be gigantic. And you think, oh, it's just a month, but it just becomes wet muck. And you're basically waiting till spring to get going. So if you can get going in August and get going in September, a project can happen. Otherwise, you wait a year, and that puts a lot of pressure on all the developers and all the home builders. It also puts a lot of pressure on staff. So be gentle on everybody, please. That's all I had. I'd be happy to take questions.
Yeah, but Counselor Anderson followed by Mayor Bennett.
Go ahead, Commissioner. If you wanna go, go ahead. I've already talked. You haven't, Kevin. I don't know. Are you on, you're on the screen now, Kevin. I don't know if you wanna ask.
Thank you. I'm just curious. You know, I know Counselor Hoy commented on my horns behind me earlier tonight. But I'm sitting in the Coes Building downtown. And, you know, I'm curious about, you know, this is a really good spot for affordability. And what are we doing or thinking about for the Front Street area? And redeveloping that and making it, you know, a place where people can afford to build not only a commercial, but also residential places?
The question, are you talking about up high where the true property is?
I'm just, I'm asking about the Front Street area.
The sort of the north, north part of Front Street?
Yeah, north, you know, the old industrial.
Yeah, yeah, where the true property is.
Exactly.
Yeah, so we're having conversations with the property owners there about replicating what we did out with the Jory Apartments property, which is this single property urban renewal area concept that then can be used to incentivize affordable units in a market rate development. So we're just in the early conversations and exploratory stages of that. But it seems to have worked well out, you know, out at the Center Street property, out of Jory Apartments. And that model, it helps with the long-term operational costs that Richard was speaking about. And at Jory, we were able to secure fifteen percent of the units at an affordable rate in exchange for this urban renewal incentive. So it's a model that I think we can replicate up on Front Street and in other, potentially in other areas of the community.
Yeah, I just think that might be an opportunity for us to redevelop an area in Salem that would be great for similar situations like I'm renting here in downtown. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, thank you. That's a very good question, Commissioner Cameron. And I will tell you that that area, our Salem project, has zoned at mixed use and a higher density. And the same thing is true on the other side of the river. And the eventual hope is that we will be building mixed-use, higher-density places and, you know, six, eight-story buildings that we can get these kind of incentives in the Jory. And I think it's more possible to do it there than it was in the Jory Project, as Richard will talk about from the neighbors, because you're in basically a single-family residential area, and it's harder to build bigger and higher in those kind of areas. But Front Street, there's no, you know, it's hard to anything there. So I think that'd work very well. This kind of segues into, Richard, the question. I had other questions, but they've been answered. In order to come up with the figure of the percentage of the Jory development that you're gonna build in affordable housing, you know, we had to look at your books and became, you know, our staff came to some agreement that, yes, you could do it this many percentage, and we might have wanted twenty, or we might have wanted twenty-five, but it wasn't, didn't pencil out for you. Is that, well, first of all, how did that work in terms of you opening the books? And then the end result, and is that something you think is, can be used in other types of areas, specifically like the Front Street area?
Yeah, I absolutely do. I think opening the books, I mean, just like any funder, you gotta open your books, and you gotta say, here's our costs, here's our rents. And rents have gone up since then, which is good for our investor on that, clearly. And it was a good time to build. But if you, I think that's how you have to look at these projects, is you look at the funding they need and the risk they're putting into it, and you have to determine a reasonable level of affordability. On that specific project, we were able to provide some units at forty percent AMI, which is much lower than the typical affordable project. And I actually, we're just starting to lease units, and I had the assistant manager come over to me. And she knew that I had worked on this, and she wanted to know, to tell me about the families that she was moving in there and that how she had worked at another project we built that was at sixty percent AMI and how thankful some families were to be able to find something at that forty percent AMI rate, cuz it really offers a different segment of the population. So that was really nice, and it was really nice of her to come and tell me the story. And I won't repeat it, but just tell me the story of who's moving in and how excited they were and how it really is gonna give them a leg up.
Mayor Bennett.
Thank you. Richard, I can't say enough about the way you all have operated here and with Cornerstone as well as the Jory Project in the affordable housing and market rate housing arena in very, at least in one of those, a very difficult situation that Tom and I became very familiar with in, at the old State Hospital grounds. My question, and you may have answered it, I just like to get a real clear picture. Do you think affordable housing can really be built without some sort of government involvement in this market? I think back to friends of mine over there, including city counselors, who build affordable housing, the way they usually put affordable housing until you're bankrupt. And I'd like to understand how that works in terms of government support for these projects in order to just get them on the ground in however many units or percentages of units.
To answer your question directly, no. I don't think affordable housing can be built in any measurable way without some kind of government subsidy. I will say, there's two ways it occurs that I can think of without government subsidy, and that is naturally occurring affordable housing, which is housing that was built at market rate, and thirty years later, it becomes affordable. There's apartments in downtown Salem that were built in the twenties and thirties and forties and fifties, and it's affordable. And I had friends who went to Willamette Law, who found little apartments in there and made it work during law school. And those are out there. And if you look over time, when you have long episodes of not building, then twenty, thirty years later, you tend to have a housing crisis. And I went to a kind of national seminar where they showed a lot of lack of apartment building in the eighties and early nineties, which really caused a lack of that type of housing now to be affordable. The other kind of housing that I think is close to unsubsidized is where Kevin Cameron is right now, in the Coes, which is microunit housing. And that has two big advantages to it. One is just the size of the units tiny, and some people can live in a three hundred and fifty square foot place. And it's just because of their time of their life or the choices they make. Or, but that can reduce costs, right? It isn't for everyone. It won't solve the problem, but it definitely helps. But the other key to that project is the lack of parking. Parking is incredibly expensive, and there's very few places that you can live in this area where you don't need a car or you don't need a car every day. And downtown Salem is one where people are making it work. And that Coes Building specifically is making it work by utilizing the underutilized garages, parking garages in the City of Salem, as well as just people parking at their work, walking to restaurants, walking to Willamette, having a lot of their trips via transit or via other means. So those are two ways that you can really limit the support. But I don't think those can, unless you wait thirty years, can really make a dent in affordable housing.
Great, thank you.
Transit Board Member Davidson, you had your hand up and you lowered it. Do you have a question?
I did. My question was actually gonna be about parking minimums, but Richard addressed that to an extent. So I'll just hop on a quick little soapbox and say that I think addressing residential parking minimums is probably one of the least painful things that local governments can do to address an acute housing crisis. And so I'm really happy that the City of Salem has done that focusing along the core network. I think there's opportunities to expand our reconsideration of parking minimums, so mandates from the government that residential units must have certain number of parking citywide. And so, thanks, Richard.
Counselor Barney.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Berger, for bringing up the parking idea. It got me thinking about a couple of things. So I had a couple comments, questions. You know, we've heard a lot tonight about construction costs and how we can't lower the costs. And likewise, we can't really increase people's wages. So what can we do to make housing more affordable in terms of make it easier for folks to be able to stay in their homes? So I'm wondering, how can we lower their utility costs? Or how can we lower their transportation costs so that they only have to use one car or no cars? You know, I can see, kind of thinking outside the box here and thinking about in terms of design and development, how do we look at that side of the equation too? So if they do have to pay fifty percent of their household income on rent or a mortgage, how do we make that possible? So my question is, you know, what changes can we maybe talk about or put together to make more money available for rent and mortgages by reducing the other costs outside of the rent and the mortgage?
Yeah, I think building efficiency is a big thing. It is not just the mortgage or the rent. There's a lot of other costs involved. Transportation costs, utility costs. But I think a lot of people look at the vertical mixed use as a savior, and it is a very expensive way to build. So I do wanna emphasize that. Like, if you look at a project like South Block, which is, you know, a great project and has done a lot for downtown, that kind of podium-style parking underneath or even just a podium with ground floor retail that you see in the Pearl District is an incredibly expensive unit type. So it's much more affordable if you can have all-wood type of project. So if you're looking for affordability, yes, you'll save some people on transportation costs. But if you're having to build that podium style, it's just gonna add an incredible amount of cost. And we've looked at a lot of downtown projects. We've been involved in some. But it is a very high cost and kind of forcing people into that or thinking that it's a savior, it really isn't on the affordability side. Even though I love it, and I think it's done amazing things for downtown Salem.
Okay, thanks.
So I have a quick question for you, Richard, before we move on to our final panelists. So I'm thinking back to a few years ago when we were at the table talking through your pro forma and whether or not it would support twenty percent affordable units at Jory or ten percent, and we ended up landing on fifteen. In today's market, if we were having that conversation today, what would your pro forma support?
I don't know. I've been working on a pro forma. I would have said fifteen is where we're at, but I just got those two hundred and forty-five dollar construction cost numbers within the last month. So those are very raw, and I'm mourning that. So I don't, I haven't run that, Kristen, but I but I know construction costs are really killing us. So.
Well, thanks for letting me put you on the spot.
Yeah, no. As I ran it a month ago, as kind of looking at the project similarly, I was feeling good about the increased rents kind of matching the the construction costs and being in that fifteen percent range. But then we got new numbers, and I was performing, you know, one ninety a square foot, thinking I was being conservative, and then I jumped to two forty-five a square foot. So, well, I hope rents keep going up for the development's sake, not for everyone else's sake, cuz people can't just keep affording higher rents.
Well, thank you. All right, our last panelist is Nicole Youssef with Salem Housing Authority.
Good evening. I'll try to make this quick. A lot of everything that I was gonna discuss as well has been discussed tonight. But I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that have been talked about. Commissioner Cameron, that who's building? That project did approach the Salem Housing Authority for seeing if they could help make it somewhat affordable or provide project-based vouchers. And this is where I'm gonna segue into the difficulties of making projects work and the timelines involved in it. We did try to make it work with project-based vouchers, but because that project was so close to closing and starting construction, they had no time in their construction to leverage the time needed for environmental reviews, subsidy layering reviews, the fragile requirements in order to make that happen. So we have continued conversation with them. We've actually toured the building. We've taken a look, seen how it's working. And we continue, we wanna come back in a year and see how that design has worked out for them and see if they have any future projects that we can partner with them. So that's the one thing that the Salem Housing Authority, not only do we do our own development and construction of our own affordable housing projects, but we also are working very hard to partner with private developers in the Salem, in the community area with our Affordable Housing Tax Exemption Program. And we have completed three complete general partnerships in which we have affordable housing units within, that are segued in, and we monitor those on an annual basis. And we provide them through our ORS three oh seven dash zero nine two the ability to be a general partner with the Salem Housing Authority and provide that tax exemption to a certain percentage based on what they're willing to do and offer for affordable housing units. This has helped us maximize units at a faster rate. This has helped us maximize units at a faster rate and provide more affordable housing throughout the city of Salem. And it's been great partnerships so far and the units are maintained, the affordable housing files are kept up. I can tell you that is a very difficult process that some are, feel is a little daunting. I'm not sure if Richard Burger or any of them can attest to having an individual come through with affordable housing sites is like a home more mortgage. The paperwork that's related to, to leasing a unit requires as much as a mortgage. Our files are very thick. They require extra security, double lock security measures and effort to meet all the federal requirements for having that information on our sites and properties. And so that can be a little intimidating to a private developer who's never done affordable housing, doesn't understand the process or how much goes into it and how much monitoring is involved in it. So we try to make this Affordable Housing Tax Exemption Program as easy and streamlined as possible by offering assistance and training staff on site, having to go through performers, walking through with developers to make the process as easy as possible for them to provide additional affordable housing units. Those affordable housing units are key to also allowing our vouchers to be utilized quickly. They can often make the affordable housing units work with a voucher. And so it's increasing our voucher capacity as well. But in timelines in general, these projects are very difficult and cumbersome to get to, to the finish line as they were seeding in affordable housing. I can tell you at Ikona Hall, we have twelve different funding sources in that project. And, and that includes low-income housing tax credits, historic tax credits. I could, the list goes on, the city of Salem, both home and CDBG, permanent loans, sponsor loans. All of these have to mesh together at the very end to make this project pencil, make performers work, make us be able to continue to operationally meet the obligations that we have committed for the funding. And that funding often comes with a lot of strings attached, which includes additional resident services, permanent supportive housing, wraparound services that are not always paid for through the, the rents that we receive at the project and require us to go out for grants for operational needs on an annual basis as well. Redwood is a good example. It's the first permanent supportive housing project in Salem that we did. That was before the permanent supportive housing grant money and funds came from Oregon Housing and Community Services. So we do not receive any permanent supportive or wraparound services funding to make that project work. We receive minimal rents to do probably three times the work at the site operationally, including twenty-four seven staffing, security and everything else that comes along with the project. Additional cleaning and working with all our collaborative partners. So it can be very difficult to operationally maintain these long term. So finding additional resources to make that happen long term for, for different entities that are putting these projects together is, is definitely key to keeping them going. Sequoia Crossings is one that is scheduled to close mid-October. We're very excited about it. Sixty units of permanent supportive housing. It is coming with permanent supportive housing wraparound service dollars. It's a, a complete program, but we started that in two thousand and nineteen by going through the Permanent Supportive Housing Institute and have had to continue on through all of the federal regulations and all of the subsidy layering reviews. Our environmentals have required additional DEQ standards to be met. And the cost of that project in just this last year has gone from eighteen million to twenty-four million to make it pencil. So I can tell you that has a lot to do with our market as Richard has just indicated, his units went from one hundred and ninety a square foot. The average affordable housing projects are averaging above two fifty, two sixty because of all of the additional requirements on them. So it can be very difficult to get them to the finish line. And if it wasn't for some housing trust fund money that's come out this last year, we would have a significant gap, even though the city of Salem has also stepped in and helped with this project. But we are hoping to get that to the finish line. The other thing is, is that Salem Housing Authority, as these partners have indicated, is not the only affordable housing projects. I can tell you on the website for Oregon Housing, there's over fifty different affordable housing sites listed in the city of Salem. And many people are not aware of that. They are listed all over the city of Salem, South Salem, West Salem, downtown, north, northeast, south, southeast, all over the city of Salem. And I can tell you, one of our biggest hurdles at this agency is finding land availability that meets all of the federal requirements for us to bring in these dollars. That includes if the airport's too close, if the floodway in Salem, which is nearly impossible for us to meet. It seems like every opportunity we have has some sort of floodway that attaches to, to a portion of it. That immediately kills the project. We cannot build anything with federal dollars in a floodway, flood zone. And there's many, including the Jason Lee Manor and the downtown corridor that we attempted to try to look at. But as soon as we saw that the floodway touched it, we had to back away from it immediately and couldn't make it work because we couldn't bring any subsidy into the project. So there's a lot of different layers that go into these and the complexity of them are very difficult. But I can tell you that we look at land and one of our biggest things is that they can walk to a grocery store, that they can catch a bus on a transit, that they can ride a bicycle on a bike path or walk into a walk on a sidewalk. We're very diligent. We'll walk up to a piece of land and almost instantly go, it's too close to the train tracks. We can't make this work. And you have to be very cognizant to those different needs in order to find a piece of land that can make it work. We're very fortunate with Sequoia Crossings that since over a decade ago, we, we tore down a derelict project of our own. And we have the ability to make that project work. But that takes a lot of background, working with neighborhoods, working with our neighbors, proving to individuals and making our projects not stand out. They are not housing projects. They are another apartment complex in the neighborhood. And we really tried to take the stigmatism of being a housing authority project out of our sites and that including not even listing our name on any of our logos on any of our projects to make individuals feel like they can supersede and become self-sufficient. So I, I just wanted to bring that up and as well as the, when I talk about the affordable housing lists, there's also a HUD subsidized list. And I'm sorry, I don't know the exact numbers, but there's many HUD subsidy projects that are private owned throughout the city of Salem. And they're, they're scattered again, all throughout, all, all areas of both downtown, northeast, south. And there's two over in the west side that are specific to seniors. They are a part of West Valley Housing Authority, but in the city limits of Salem. And, and, and that's another thing that we, we hope to work and collaborate more with our, our, our local housing authorities, both Marion and Polk or, or West Valley Housing Authority to build better relationships and be able to better utilize and, and the transit is a big issue. If I often get calls from the, the county housing authorities about port ends and portability and if we won't absorb vouchers and different things because they, they work in Salem or they need to get to Salem, but the transit system to get back and forth and, and the timelines with that. Many of our, our clients work in, in industries such as Amazon, Home Depot Distribution. They, they work swing shift hours and over the night and there's not the mass transit capabilities. So all those things that need to be considered into the future. So I'm very happy to see everybody here at the table today.
Thank you, Nicole. So we are at the end of our time. I'm looking to see if we have any questions for Nicole. I'm not seeing any pop up, so talking slowly, just, just in case. So if we don't have any questions, I want to just take a moment and on behalf of the city staff and all of the policymakers to thank our panelists for taking your evening and spending it with us to share your experiences, what it takes to bring more affordable housing to the community. And thank you for your investment in our community, your time and for many of you, your, your financial investment as well. So thank you very much for that. And I also want to thank all of our policymakers here tonight for taking your time to join in on a, a regional conversation because this is a very big lift. If this is an issue that has been decades in the making, that's not going to be remedied quickly and is going to take the time and energy and investment on behalf of all of our organizations to, to make progress in this area. So thank you for being here tonight and I hope that you've all learned something. You have some resources to call on if you have further questions now. And again, thank you very much. Donna Mara, if you had anything you wanted to say in closing or do you just want to adjourn?
Well, thank you. I just say thank you as well. I think it's real important that we all met on this. There are cross-jurisdictional issues that we need to get resolved relative to adding affordable housing to our inventory in this community. We all have a stake in it. We all have a responsibility in it. So I hope as time passes, we can have some more conversations and that they'll be constructive and allow us to keep adding to this inventory of housing and affordable housing. So to the extent that this assists in informing folks on how the, what this issue looks like, what the costs are like, what the challenges, I'm always stunned when I hear these, the, the number of challenges that face those who develop affordable housing as well as just market rate housing. It's always kind of stunning. So thank you again for taking your time. And I hope if you have any questions, you'll take advantage of now putting some faces with people. You know, Kristen Rutherford, our interim city manager who knows everything there is to know about this, along with Nicole Utes. I hope you'll take advantage of contacting her as well. So thank you very much. And then I'll adjourn us.
Very good. Thank you, everybody.
For more videos and for more information, go to capitalcommunitymedia.org and follow us on social media.